We'll call this meeting to order if I could. Councillor Ingram and Councillor Seven have sent their regrets for this afternoon's meeting. Joining me in the council chamber is the CEO Joan Thompson, our clerk Todd Chana Defoe and our deputy clerk Chris Bantock. I understand Kim McElroy, our Director of Social Services is on the line as well as David St. Louis, Director of Community Services Carmen Kruger, Acting Director of Corporate Services Fire Chief John Parity, and Kirk Cos, Acting Director of Human Resources Taylor Crinkler, Director of Infrastructure Development, join us as well, and I believe all the members of council that are supposed to be here, except maybe two, Councillor Beatty and Councillor Bunting are not online yet. We'll start, we do have a quorum, and I'll just confirm that with the clerk that six would qualify.
Through your worship, yes, that's correct.
Thank you. All right, so we'll begin this afternoon's meeting. And the first item is declarations of your interest in the general nature thereof. Seeing none, I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Through your worship, just prior to today's meeting, an addendum was circulated to you via email, and that was to add a delegation to the special agenda dated November 25.
So could I have a motion, Councillor Ritzman, seconded by Councillor Henderson, that the addendum be adopted for this afternoon's proceedings? All those in favor? Host, if any, and that is carried. Thank you.
So through your worship, the next item on the agenda will actually be item 4.1. The in-camera session will be held following this meeting. Actually, correction, moving to item three, reported the communal and camera session 3.1. We're going to report out from the reconvene session from Monday night. So the November 22 reconvene session, the following matters were considered, and that was items 6.2, review of lease agreements with festival theater for the items listed on the agenda. Item 7.1 to 7.7 were appointments to various advisory committees under the personal matters by identifiable individuals exemption. And at the in-camera session, direction was given on those items. With respect to 3.2, reporting out will be undertaken at the December 13 council meeting. So moving to item four, reported the Director of Social Services. So item 4.1 is a resolution regarding Britannia Phase Two community feedback. At this time, I will see if staff have any information they would like to provide.
Thank you through the worship. I will have the manager of housing quickly brief the report and be ready for questions.
Hi, thank you, Kim. Through your worship, the report is regarding our community consultations that we undertook through Britannia Phase Two. These were done mostly in August. We had three groups that we consulted, the Accessibility Advisory Committee, Britannia Phase One residents and the broader public. These consultations weren't required as part of the planning process. They were undertaken to get a better feel of what our community and residents needed. The feedback from these consultations are included in the reports, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for members of council at this time? If not, what I'd like to do is then have a motion that we hear Ken Wood with regard to Britannia Street Phase Two. Councillor Burbak and Councillor Clifford, all in favor? And that's carried, and we'll have the clerk bring Mr. Wood into the meeting. Mr. Wood, if you can unmute your mic. There we go. Thank you.
You can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So I have provided a few pictures as well with regards to this, this presentation. I was at the meeting that was held in late August outdoors in the evening with about 15 other tenants here, who are all quite engaged and had a number of suggestions and ideas based on their lived experience in Phase One. And I've looked at the report that's been submitted by staff, and I think there were an awful lot of suggestions made, so some of these may not have been recorded or emphasized as much as I think they deserve. The number one concern was around soundproofing and insulation for the new building, because the present building, the soundproofing is basically non-existent, and there have been many complaints about noise, and there's been neighbor-to-neighbor interaction with, with noise, noise complaints. And I understand that the, the building monitors had some sound insulation installed in their apartment. And I thought maybe that was a pilot or something like that. But this building lacks the sound insulation, and it's going to cause grievances and problems between neighbors. So for Phase Two, I hope that emphasis will be placed on ensuring that that sound insulation exists. Also, in terms of insulation, we need insulation on the main floors. I'm on a main floor, and in winter, the floor is frankly freezing. And we're all low income, so we can't all go out and get wall-to-wall carpeting. So that's, that's something I think needs more emphasis and consideration. The second thing is request for kitchen facilities in the community room, which is a very good design, by the way. Residents generally like that there's an outdoor area attached to it and a community room where people can gather, which has been lacking, like an indoor space for some time. So that's very much appreciated. But we think we, we should ensure that there are kitchen facilities, because it's a community building opportunity where people can have potlucks, Christmas parties, and get together, staff can have meetings here, all kinds of things. So I would like to see us, you know, recommending that we have a fully functional community space in that area. And I should mention, by the way, too, this is not just one tenant at, at 230 Britannia. It's not just me. We have a Britannia Tenants Association, and I've been soliciting input and passing it on as much as I could directly to Kim with, in this regard. The third item is the outdoor, what I'll call gazebo. And maybe that first picture can be put up of, of the gazebo picture one that basically shows you what it looks like from the entryway to the building. It's quite a ways away from the building. It's basically a roof on four posts, and it's used extensively by, by people in the building as a gathering space. There's been barbecues, people have held there in the summer, and all kinds of events, birthday parties for the kids and all that kind of thing. And as you can see in the picture, it is open on all four sides, and we have a horrid wind that blows through there. So even in nice, nice weather, it can be very windy and chilly under that location. And if you could show a picture too, which is more of a close-up, one of the suggestions that somebody had, which was, I thought was a very good one, was a simple way would be, and this picture is showing you facing towards Churchill Circle. So right where that's kind of blue pool is, that's been water for the dogs and that kind of thing. On that side, we're suggesting that somehow we seal that, that one side off. So basically, one wall, we're not talking about enclosing a building or doing anything like that. And one of the suggestions somebody had that I thought was quite good was we could use a shipping container basically on its side that would provide some shelter from, from the elements and such, but would also become an art project for the outdoors area. So it could be something that could really, you know, be aesthetically pleasing and assist in a gathering space. As you can see, there's a chair there that one of the residents who lives in, in one of the small apartments, he's out there even in the worst of weather, reading a book, because he likes to get away and he needs, needs a little bit of, you know, outdoor kind of isolation. He'll, he'll read books out there, but I've seen him even in a blizzard sitting there. And that's, that's a bit strange. It would be nice if, if it at least had a windbreak in it. So that's all we're asking for, is something that's a bit of a windbreak. And if you could show picture three, that shows you a little bit from the other angle of what this place is. And again, it's used quite extensively by people. The kids come down there, they do art projects. We had last Halloween, we had a, a little pumpkin parade for the kids, and we had them carving pumpkins and doing all kinds of things outdoors. So this is a major gathering space for families and people in the area. You've got about a dozen kids in the building, and they really do appreciate being able to have the use, that use of that space. The fourth item has to do with a need for a larger community garden than what was represented in the plan, which was basically a few kind of raised beds out in the open. And interest in the community garden is very strong here. As you can recall, we requested it last a year or so ago, and people are willing to donate tools and plants and supplies and all kinds of things. But we have a concern about vandalism in the area too, because we have had some thefts and vandalism. And it's one of the reasons we have the bike lockers here, so people can be safe and have their bikes locked up. So what we need is a garden that can actually be enclosed in some form. And if you could show garden one as, as the picture. I did a little research on the different kinds of things that you could put in a garden, and I kind of like this idea of a bit of a raised planter, because it also will allow, if you've got snow buildup, anything like that, it's still going to allow kind of, I don't know, the environment to, to wind its way through. But it's the kind of thing that we could have several of these in a, in a secure location where people can access it to. And if you could show garden two, I know Bonnie's concerned about this too. This would be like an AOD compliant garden, where you've actually got people who can come up in wheelchairs and, and work with the gardens too. And this kind of raised bed, personally, I, I like it. We're okay with whatever the council decides on it, but we do need to have it so that everybody can access it. We have a number of people in wheelchairs and people use walkers that have said that they have a great interest in doing some gardening. And just an aside with the gardening, it's not just a, a kind of an entertainment or a hobby thing. You have a lot of low-income people in this building, and we really like to have gardens where people could grow their own vegetables, and it would help supplement and allow them to basically deal with the cost of living in the city. So it's, it's something that would be really appreciated. And if you could show garden three, this picture basically, and I tried to find a good one, because it's got to be to scale and a proper size, but we need something that doesn't have to be exactly this format, but something that sort of seals it off from, from the other area for a couple of reasons. One is probably it would be good to have something that's more like chicken wire to keep, you know, rodents and that kind of thing out. But it would be something where it could isolate it a little bit. We've talked a bit about should it be a chain link fence so people can't climb over it, but we don't want it to look like a prison with barbed wire up there. But something like that in the two white buildings in the background would be an example of where, and we probably only need one, where we could store the garden tools. So everything is in one place, and we put a lock on it and share keys. And in terms of running the garden and stuff, we want to work closely with the local who have all the expertise for this kind of thing. And we'd appoint somebody who would basically be the keeper of the key for this kind of thing, so that we make sure that it was, you know, tidy and, and properly done and access to everybody, that kind of thing. So that's kind of it for the, for the garden. What you've got in your plans kind of showed just a few almost raised planters scattered about, which frankly is, is not enough and would, would be open to vandalism, which I'm concerned about. The fifth item is just a comment that was made by myself and a number of other people that in Phase One building, we've got problems with drafts under all of the doors. You've got very secure sealed doors on there, but the drafts are in some cases as high as two inches high off the floor. And I know for a fact, I live on the first, first floor in 103. You can hear the wind howl there really loudly, so much so that, you know, if you're having a conversation, it interrupts it. And I'm concerned too that it could be a fire risk as well, because I suspect that those doors are intended to, you know, make the apartment secure in the case of fire. Now, an easy solution to that, that I have suggested to Kim was some of the people in the buildings, and I've been trying to find the, the supplier for it, and I've been unable, but they've got kind of rubber mats, raised rubber, almost like a cylinder that's placed against the door and anchored to the force, that when you close the door, you've got a secure seal. And it's usually the, the one or two inches below the door that's a problem. Around the door, it's not a problem, it's just right at the bottom. So I think that that would be an easy, easy fix, and maybe when you're looking at Phase Two, you might want to ensure that the specifications indicate that those doors need to be securely sealed and closed when they're closed. The other item has to do with balconies, and I know that that was requested by, by, by several people, including, I believe, Bonnie Henderson, asked about it at one of the meetings, and it sure would be nice in Phase Two that if people had balconies that were facing Britannia Street. But I understand that they, they might be costly, but I think it should still be given some, some degree of consideration that there might be some way of, of access to, to the outside, even if it was like a mini balcony or something. I'm not a planner or architect, so I don't know. But it's the kind of thing that a lot of people feel isolated in their apartments and want to, want to get, you know, be able to get and see outside. So those are the six items. The other emphasis that I want to point out is the need for the playground for children. We have got a number of children in the building. I, as I said, I think it's about a dozen kids. And it would be nice to have a playground that was possibly fenced in, but at least a play area where, you know, it's in plain view, and parents and the children can, can gather, because right now, they're kind of all over the place. And a couple of times, various people have been concerned about the speed of vehicles entering the property, because the entrance way is sometimes very, very fast for some of the drivers that come in here. So there's concerns about safety for the kids. So we need a little area off somewhere for the, for the kids. The other item has to do with pets. There are a lot of pets in the building. There's several people with dogs and cats. And a dog run might be something you might want to look at, because that would control the dogs in the area, because I know that one of the concerns when you're looking at a building is what's its impact on the surrounding area. Right now, people are walking their dogs out in the open area here where the private development is going to, going to take place. So pretty soon, that won't be available to us. And I'm concerned that there might be people walking their dogs, and of course, dogs have to do with nature calls. And we might end up with, you know, neighbors upset about it. So maybe an enclosed dog run might be something that's necessary. All it would require is a chain link fence and a small area where people could take their dogs to, to do their business, especially in inclement weather. The last thing that I want to raise, and if you could put up the picture called catio, I personally have a, have cats, and I would like to be able to have a consideration that we could install these kinds of things outside our, our windows. Now, this one looks like a permanent attachment. I'm not intending that, because I've looked at some designs, and I've talked to somebody who's a bit of an architect, and we can make something that looks similar to that.
If it's enclosing, Ken, yeah, you've been over the 10 minutes.
I will, I will close. And will, will fit against the window, but would be removable, so that it's not going to like be permanent on, on the windows. But that would help people with some of their cats and also basically give people more room in their apartments. So I just want to close and say, I thank you for the opportunity to, to make this deputation. I just want council to remember that with the second building, you're going to have around 100 people in this local community. So let's try to make it build it so that it becomes a true community. Thank you very much. No answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wood at this time? Councillor Henderson?
I have quite a few, actually. So maybe this one will be for Ken necessarily, but at the gazebo area, if we seal the one side off, can you still barbecue under there? Does anybody know? I think the fire chief might be on the call here, maybe.
Fire chief for the actual chief building official, I believe Mr. DeWeard is on the line.
Through your worship, Councillor Henderson, could you repeat your question, please?
Sure, I can. So at the gazebo area, if you seal one side and sell three sides open, would you still be able to have that barbecue under there?
So it'd just be depend upon the distance. So, so typically, we're, we ask anywhere on average of meters from any, any structure for, to avoid heat buildup. Let's say you've got your barbecue in your backyard of your own house. If you're too close to the siding, you'll actually melt the siding. So it's not so much about all the open spaces, it's about the distance away from the closed space. So I mean, there, there'd have to be some adjustments being there.
Oh, so that's perfect. Okay, thanks. So they can just have it out closer to the front then. The kitchen area that you talked about, are you thinking like fridge, microwave, sink? Or are you thinking tower, dishes, pots and pans?
Yes, I'm, I'm just thinking about a, a small fridge and a kitchen sink and any dishes, anything like that. Our tenants association would, would supply any of that kind of thing, or people would bring it in. So it wouldn't be a matter of like storing food long-term there or storing, you know, lots, or requesting that city buy dishes or anything, because I, I don't think that's tenable. People, when they have these parties and such, tend to use reusable plates, and they bring their own cutlery and everything else, so that's.
Are you thinking stove or microwave?
Um, stove would be ideal, but I realize that that's costly. Microwave would, would be doable.
Okay, thanks. Just curious about that. My next one. In the garden, a fence around it, I'm guessing, I don't know if you've been up to, I think it's Franklin Drive, and they have a community garden there, and they've got a fence around it. And they have the shed actually inside the garden area too. And, you know, you were talking about keys and that, but I'm thinking more like combination locks so that people can have the combination, so you don't have that whole bunch of keys if people are losing that thing. I'm assuming you can get outdoor combination locks, but so you're thinking several raised gardens or a couple raised gardens and some on the ground? Is that what you're thinking? Are you thinking?
Probably all raised, like if, I would think that when it comes down to creating these things, if you've got one plan, it's probably cheaper to do them all the same. So either one is fine, frankly, but most people say they kind of prefer the, the raised ones.
Got three more. So the door you're saying is howling. Is it just howling when somebody comes into the building?
No, sometimes it's, it's consistent. It seems to be, and it's been both in summer and winter. It seems to be, and I'm guessing, it seems to be sort of tied to whether people all have their air conditioning running or their, their windows open or something like this, because it sucks in the draft, and it's coming into all of the apartments. Like the flow is from the hallway in, so there's some sort of pressure thing that's going on.
Wow, that seems really odd, because I'm thinking like you're talking about a mad idea, but I mean, you can buy those door flaps that attach to the door, so maybe staff can look at that. But maybe we should try and find out what's causing us howling, because I was thinking maybe when somebody come in from outside, and you're near the front door, that maybe it was just that. But if everybody on the ground floor.
Yeah, I'm hearing it from other people. I'm close to the front door, but I'm hearing it from other people down, way down the hall.
Hearing it from upstairs too, or just downstairs?
Uh, yes, from upstairs too.
Oh, so I think we should look into why that's happening. And then my, I got two more. So this dog run you're talking about, in Stratford, we have a dog run way out. Obviously, if you don't have a car, it would be very good, but we have a dog, we have a bylaw about people have to clean up after their dogs. So if somebody's living in those apartments, it shouldn't be any different than anybody living in, what if we got 3,300 apartments or something in the city, that they all have to do the same thing type thing, like walk their dog, clean up their dog after their mess, because I'm thinking if you have a dog run there, who's going to clean that? That's a major undertaking to keep that clean, because you don't want to end up with, I don't know, I forget what they call it, dog bacteria type thing, so.
Yeah. We would expect that the people who have the dogs would clean up after themselves. And honestly, I know all the people that have dogs, and they, they tend to help each other walk the dogs, and they're fairly responsible from what I've seen. So it would be a matter of the tenants making sure that, that we are cleaning it. And frankly, if nobody else cleans it, I'll clean it.
Well, it's just, it's, it's a health thing you have to be careful with too.
Yeah, yeah.
So my last one is the cost of the balconies. In Phase One, when we looked at that, the cost of the balconies, it was better to have that money spent on the inside of the building, because I guess we could maybe get staff to bring forth a cost on how much a balcony adds on to it, because I forget the cost of it. And then it's, you know, the upkeep of it for many years down. I mean, technically, you probably wouldn't have anything for, say, 20, 30 years that you have to fix on it. But, you know, you've heard of things where balconies aren't looked after, and then they collapse and stuff. So that was all looked at, and that was part of the reason is that people at that time felt they wanted more money spent on the inside so that they have bigger spaces and, you know, make your things inside. So that was the reason behind that. I mean, balconies are great. People like to go sit on them, but so then it was decided to have like that big area outside where they have the gazebo and the walk, you know, cement to it and so that people could have a place to gather. So that was the reason behind that.
If, if, okay, if I could just respond to that, part of that came from, and there's a little bit of background to it. Part of that came from some people who initially had put out like little lawn chairs just outside their own units, out, out on the front area and stuff, and they were told, no, you're not allowed to do that. And people were like wanting to be able to sit outside and in, in the summer in, in lawn chairs, like right in front of their apartments and such. So that kind of morphed into, if we had a balcony, we could do it. So honestly, I fully understand that, and if the cost is, is prohibitive for balconies, definitely would, would want to have more space inside, because that, if there's a trade-off, people told me they do want the more space inside, so you are right on that.
Cam, do you have a comment on that, or is that in fact true that they're not allowed to sit out in the grass in their lawn chairs along the, the front of the building?
Through your worship, whereabouts, they, they, they do sit out on the grass and under the gazebo quite a bit, yes.
Well, there was one, there was one person who actually had her, her stuff out, and it's a bit famous. She has claimed the private, private area where the private development will be, and she's, she's built a little thing on, on their property, so she's able to sit out there and have plants and sit with her dogs and have a smoke and all that kind of thing. So, so she was, she was told that nobody's allowed to put anything like on the grass. You can't even take a lawn chair and like put it out in front of your, your unit and sit in it, is what she was told, and that's where that came from. And the reason behind it, just so you know, it was that there was a concern, you can't leave that there, because of course, maintenance people have to come and take care of the grass and the trim and all that kind of stuff. So it can't be anything that's even semi-permanent. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's, that's it.
Can you have a response to that?
Through your worship, I will look into that to see if there's any background that I can look into, to see specifically the details surrounding that.
Like I can see, you know, what you're saying, Ken, about if they were leaving things out, but if somebody wanted to take their lawn chair out and just sit on the grass and then take it back in. But it sounds like she was doing more than just have her lawn chair out there. It sounds like she had something kind of built there and having the smoke and all that, you know, like if you have to be respectful because you have what, 35 tenants in that building, and so.
Well, she was putting out planters and that kind of thing, yeah, so that didn't interfere, yes.
Okay, I'm done.
Any other questions at this time? Councillor Clifford?
Yeah, I was going to ask our staff, when, when, when Ken was talking about howling under the doors, is your air makeup in the hallways in our buildings? I know I go to lots of apartments, they have air makeup, like only for the hallways. Like, do we have up at Britannia, is, is there anything? like only for the hallways. Like, do we have a Britannia? Is it, is there anything like that, like an air makeup in the halls?
Through your worship, I I would need to take that back. I I am not familiar with that concept, so I will, I will uh take that back and report back on that.
Thank you. Anything further? Councilor Burbank?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Ken for providing this information. I think it's really important for us to get it from the an inside perspective. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. All right, is there anything else? Thank you, Mr. Wood, very much. I believe that is all we had under the report of the Director of Social Services at this time. So what I'd like to do is have a motion to receive the feedback that was presented in written format and Mr. Wood's uh feedback. Councilor Vazalacos and Councilor Burbank, thank you very much. All those in favor. Post Penny, that's carried. I believe before we go to the reading of the confirmatory bylaw and turn it over to the Chief Administrator for a moment, I wanted to give a brief update on another matter, so.
Uh thank you, your worship. Um so um the this, sorry, this project does have uh budget implications. And so I did want to take uh an opportunity just for a few minutes to have a, to give you a verbal update regarding the draft uh two thousand and twenty-two budget. Um so initially, council directed staff to prepare the budgets with a two to three percent increase. Uh there were additional items uh during two thousand and twenty-one uh which were also deferred to the two thousand and twenty-two budget deliberations for consideration on top of the regular operational and capital considerations. Further, decisions have been made already this year that do impact the two thousand and twenty-two budget beyond the two to three percent uh target. And these include the authorization of the long-term debt financing for capital works of almost thirty million dollars. The phasing in of the second year of the admin salary review and the implications with that. And those two items alone represent more than seven percent increase to the net uh tax levy. Uh there was also um uh service enhancements, including implementations of organics and other expansion services that have been uh dealt with. With the adoption of the asset management plan, this does require a sustainable approach to the capital assets required to deliver services. And then, as you know, there are continued revenue reductions um being experienced by the uh the city due to COVID. Staff are doing their best with remaining operational and capital requirements. And we are considering mitigation tools such as the use of prior year surplus. But we will uh not be able to meet that two to three percent uh target without significant further input as to which further services could be reduced or eliminated. And there are risks associated with uh looking at those uh service levels. There are also um previous legacy decisions and costs beyond the control of this council that are adding pressure to the budget. I want to commend the staff and the Director of Corporate Services for the great work that has been done to date on bringing in the um the budgets. I can say that due to that work, the net operational budgets um are are coming in at zero point six four percent. So there has been a lot of work uh going into to this, but I wanted you to have this update because of the um the the significance here. So your worship, those are my, is my verbal update.
Thanks very much, Ms. Thompson. I know that uh Joan wanted to provide that information to council in in another ten days, we start into our budget session and thought it was important uh as you prepare for that, that you be aware of the most current information. So uh staff, I know we'll come back with some options. And of course, some ideas, and we'd ask you to do the same over the coming week. Councilor Clifford?
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. Uh if I could have a clarification, Joan, are we talking about a seven percent increase or is that seven on top of something else? I'm just not like how you phrase that. I'm not quite, I don't quite understand what what you're talking about, but the total increase could possibly be.
Um through your worship, yes, I I can speak to it. And then I would ask the the Acting Director to to step in here with any clarifications or any additional information. So as I said, I mentioned that the two to three percent target um is is not attainable at this time. I have identified that just with the long-term borrowing identified this year and the phase in of the second year um of that admin salary review, those two alone are um in in the seven percent increase. Um but there are additional pressures on that budget that are are pushing that number higher than the seven percent that I have identified. We are working to try to mitigate that, but there are some costs in in that additional amount that are um are going to be very difficult, because some of them are beyond the control of of even council. I'm thinking of some of our outside boards and committees and the fact that our our revenue reductions continue. And your worship, I don't know if there's anything else that uh the Acting Director would like to to add.
Ms. Cooper, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh no, I'm available if there's any other questions, but I think like uh CEO summed it up. Thank you. Um there's, it's it's not gonna be uh uh where we we're hoping it would be when we come in, but um we're certainly doing our best to uh to mitigate um those increases, so.
All right. Well, look forward to your your full summer report discussion of first budget. So thank you. All right. I see no other hands, so I'll turn it over to the clerk. I think we're up to confirmatory bylaw.
So through your worship, yes, item five is reading of the of the confirmatory bylaw, and it requires first and second readings and third and final readings.
So moving first and second reading would be Councilor Burbank and seconded by Councilor Bunting. Discussion. Seeing none all in favor. Post Penny, that's carried. The third and final reading is moved by Councilor Ritzman, Councilor Clifford. See no discussion, all those in favor. Post Penny, and it's carried. And I believe that allows us now to pass a motion to adjourn to reconvening camera. Councilor Vazalacos and Councilor Burbank, all those in favor. Post Penny, and that is carried. Thank you.